Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify.
Well, good morning. The time being nine AM, I declare open the general meeting, well, the special meeting of the Gladstone Regional Council for the 2nd of November 2020. There's no apologies. We'll move to the second item on the agenda, which is the messages of condolence. Any messages of condolence, councillors? No, no messages of condolence. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the prior notifications of NPIs and conflicts of interest. I have one I'd like to read out. I, Matt Burnett, have a proscribed conflict of interest in item S1.9 Insurance Services as a report proposes to enter a contract with LGM Assets for the supply of insurance services. LGM Assets is a subsidiary of the Local Government Association of Queensland Limited, which I am a close associate as I'm a board member and a policy executive member. I will therefore leave the room and will not participate in any decision relating to S1.9 Insurance Services. Councillor Trevor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, Chris Trevor, have a declarable conflict of interest in item S/1.8 Community Investment Programme Regional Enhancement Fund Jump Start City Heart. As I lease premises at 62 Gendoon Street, Gladstone, and operate my legal practice, Chris Trevor and Associates from those premises, I may stand to gain a benefit dependent on the outcome of the matter. And accordingly, I will elect to leave the room and will not participate in any decision relating to item S/1.8.
Thank you, Councillor Trevor. Councillor Hanson.
Yes, I, councillor Rick Hanson, have a declarable conflict of interest in item S1.7 Community Investment Programme Regional Enhancement Fund Environmental Care due to Tracy Smith of Creative Recycling being one of my good friends, who I consider a related party. She's a good friend and under the new legislation may constitute a person that I have a close personal relationship with. Creative Recycling Gladstone is a proposed recipient of the funding from Regional Enhancement Fund. But I believe that I can make an unbiased decision and will stay in the room if allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Councillors, can I have a motion whether councillor Hanson should remain in the room? Well, whether he has a conflict or not, is that right? Thank first. Councillor, good luck.
Happy to move that a conflict exists.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Cameron. Any further discussion on whether a conflict exists? No, I put the motion all in favour. Thank you, the motion is carried. Now I'll ask whether councillor Hanson should remain in the room. Councillor Muscat.
I'll move that councillor Hanson remains in the room.
Thank you, councillor Muscat. Can I have a second please? Thank you, councillor Cameron. Any further discussion? I put the motion all in favour. Those against? Motion is carried. Councillor Hanson will remain in the room. Thank you. Let's see, that's all the conflicts I have recorded. Is there any other conflicts of interest, councillors? No further conflicts. I'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the merril statement on current issues. And I think we'll start by congratulating Premier Anastasia Palache on a resounding victory on Saturday night. Obviously, the premier has been returned with the majority government. And that also means that our current member for Gladstone has also been returned. So Stephen Bennett, the member for Burnett, has been returned. And Colin Boyce, our member for Callaghan, has been returned as well. So congratulations to our three state members in the Gladstone region on their successful election victories as well. And to our neighbours in Rockhampton, congratulations to Barry O'Rourke, to Brittany Lager in Kippel, and to Lachlan Miller in Gregory, all very successful campaigns. And Bundaberg at the moment is too close to call, so no doubt the electoral commissioner will keep the state up to date on what's going on in Bundaberg. But especially to the premier and to our three state members, congratulations on your victory. We look forward to working with you over the next four years, the first four-year fixed term for Queensland Government. Thank you, councillors. I'll leave it there and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the officers' reports. And the first officer's report is the amended council meeting procedure and I hand over to the general manager of finance, governance and risk, and the manager of governance as well. Thank you. Tania and Mark.
Morning, Mayor and councillors. This item is with respect to your model meeting procedures and is part of essentially the last wave of the local government reform. So there's been some new model procedures developed by the state. And essentially, if you do not determine that any model procedures, the state-based model procedures will be the one that take precedent. So what we've done is updated your model procedures to take into account the state model and then have worked those through. So what they do is they do provide that single point of reference for you with respect to just the operation of councils' meetings.
Thank you, Mark. Questions to the general manager, please? No questions? Do I have a mover in councillor? No, sorry. Question, councillor Churchill.
Yeah, I have, Mayor Matt. I just wanted to get a point of clarification on a couple of quick matters, if you wouldn't mind, and they're really just more procedural or administrative matters through you to the general manager of finance and governance. In the proposed policy you've got there, you make reference in dot point three, which is the local government regulation of 2012. Or should that be the local government regulation of 2020? Or are we talking, are we talking previous in relation to the proposed policy? Or are we now taking into consideration, because the only two legislations that you've referred to is the previous legislation of 2012?
Yes, councillor Churchill, what's happened now is there were amendment bills that have now passed and have been amalgamated in with the Local Government Act of 2009 and the Local Government Regulation of 2012. So that is the complete legislation incorporating all amendments as of the 12th of October.
As of the 12th of October?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Bear with me, Mayor Matt, I just had one other one. It was just a small administrative one, please. I should have had it listed, my apologies for this.
If I find that, we'll be able to go to councillor Hanson.
Yeah, no, I just want a point of clarification in this one here, please, is 6.9B in relation to the conflicts of interest when, if we ever have a loss of a quorum, it says all councillors, including the conflicted councillors, may participate in deciding to delegate or defer a matter. So I just want to get an understanding of that to ensure that it's clear in all of our minds that when we deal with the matters of delegation, even those, even those who have declared that they have a particular conflict, all councillors will, or it's just from a legal terminology perspective and from a policy perspective, you're using the word 'may'. In my professional understanding, there is a difference between the word 'will' and the word 'may'. Participate in deciding to delegate, whoever that may be delegated to, perhaps more than likely to the CEO, or in deferring the matter on the agenda for a later decision-making when we do have a quorum. So my question begs at this particular stage is understanding whether it's a 'may' or whether we, all of us will participate under the new legislation?
Sorry, councillor Churchill, I'm just referring back to the policy and the legislation, so I can clarify that.
I think the issue, councillor Churchill, by use of the word 'may', is that we have an option as to whether to participate or not. And I think if we choose to do so, we can, but if we choose not to do so, we just adjourn it to the next meeting when we have a full quorum. And for example, the mayor's back and the deputy mayor's back and we can all vote on it, I think, and those who have conflicts can leave the room, I think, or stay in the room. I think there's no must, so we don't definitely have to make the decision to refer, for example, to the CEO. The use of the word is not must, it's 'may', and in those circumstances, we have an election whether to decide to, including those with a conflict, decide to refer, for example, to the CEO or defer for that matter either until we get a full number of councillors around the table. That's my thoughts anyway.
Yeah, look, I tend to agree with you, councillor Trevor, based on that particular principle, but provided that those that are making the decision, provided that those are making the decision, whether it's a delegation or whether we're deferring the matter, is that we're all participating in that debate or that discussion, rather than those that have just been selected and those that have declared their conflict of interest are not involved in it in any way.
Lisa?
I'm prepared to accept that.
Tania May, have it up. My understanding was this was meant to address those issues where there could not be a quorum to delegate because the number of councillors that were conflicted. So that was a mechanism that was put in place to say, yes, you have to vote on whether to delegate, otherwise no action can happen. But Tania might have some certainty around it.
Yeah, so I can confirm that the legislation is clear that where there is a loss of quorum due to people having a conflict of interest, that those councillors can then decide on how to delegate that matter regardless of a conflict.
Maybe a bit of common sense in amongst that. And my final one is under dot point six, oh no, 6.10.1D. In just understanding this particular point, obviously with the new legislation, it may have perhaps been in the regulation of 2012, that no councillor who is speaking shall be interrupted except upon a point of order, which we've only seen one or might have been two points of order in recent times, except upon a point of order being raised either by the chairperson or by a colleague or a councillor around the table. Just understanding that as part of the procedure.
Good point, councillor.
I did notice that point as well, councillor Churchill, I was gonna...
This is obviously incorporating the standing orders that were put out by the Department of Local Government as best practice. So if you would like to remove that, I'm sure that we could, we could address that.
I'm not, I'm not seeking to remove it, I'm just seeking to ensure that it's put out on the table. And to reiterate again, no councillor who is speaking shall be interrupted except upon a point of order. And in understanding a procedural process in good governance, a point of order is either accepted or not accepted by the chairperson. And that point of order being either, being raised either by the chair, albeit the mayor or the deputy mayor in that circumstance, or by a councillor, in understanding that particular point, as long as we understand that point in good debate and good governance.
As long as we also acknowledge item E, which is when the chairperson speaks during the process of the debate, then the councillor speaking or offering to speak shall immediately cease speaking. Just letting you, jumping in on that one, councillors. I try and share it so that everybody gets their say, and often I do know that councillors do cut each other off. Often do know that some councillors, who won't mention any names, may often like to talk a little bit longer than others. I try and share it around a bit, so we're gonna follow these standing orders as best we can, but I like to keep our council meetings flowing as they have been. Democracy is when everyone gets a say, and that's what I want to see happen in this council meeting. And some people may speak a little bit longer, but I want to hear them out. Councillor Hanson?
Yes, on that, on that point, I think there was a maximum time of five minutes for speaking.
I'm not getting the egg timer out. Sorry, I gotta councillor, councillor good luck, then councillor Muscat. Sorry, councillor Hanson, finish off.
This is another item, the special meetings. I didn't go into the legislation to see about, we haven't got much in this policy here about special meetings. I just want to know, particularly, I thought they were just for items, one or two items that's come out of the council cycle. Yeah, I didn't know we just can have a special meeting. What's, what's the, what does the, what's the legislation say about that? Special meetings?
With respect to special meetings, the legislation is quite broad. It merely states that at a special meeting, the only business that can be discussed at a special meeting is that on the agenda.
You've got that here.
So there's no option to raise urgent business or anything like that.
Well, we've got the option during any meeting to defer to the next council meeting. Just that what I'm saying is that we have listed scheduled council meetings, the public can join in on those days, knowing that they're our council meeting days. I don't think that these sorts of meetings give them that opportunity, that's all.
The meeting was advertised as appropriately required by the Local Government Act and also shared across councils' network. But I get your point, councillor Hanson, a lot of people would not be expecting that it'd be a council meeting today. But it is live streamed, and if you're not watching today, I'm sure you can come back and watch tomorrow if you're watching the council meeting tomorrow, which is gonna be today by the time you're watching it. We had a meeting on Monday as well, you might want to revert back and watch that.
Just, if I could, Mr Mayor, just a little bit more. That special meeting, the, what you've got written in the policy is all that's mentioned about special meetings. Thank you. I just would like to delve into that. you. I just would like to delve into that to see what actually we can and can't do regarding that. Thanks. We're good?
Councillor Hanson, councillor, good luck, then councillor Muscat.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've just got a couple of questions. First, in regards to item 6.2, meetings open to the public, all meetings are open to the public unless the meeting has been closed under section 254j. Couple of questions around that. We, given the current circumstances with COVID, we're obviously not open to the public. How are we complying with that particular section? Is that due to the live streaming and other means?
Yeah, so there is regulations at the moment that allow us to close to the public for reasons of health and safety associated with COVID. That's only at the moment a temporary provision, which is why it hasn't been included in here. So we're not in breach of any legislation or anything like that.
No, that's all right. Just wanted to check that one. The other, I've got two more. The next one was the informal meetings. So this procedures still applies to informal meetings, yes?
No, the intention of this policy is not to apply to informal meetings. We are currently working on an informal meeting policy or procedure to bring to council. We did look at incorporating informal meeting procedure into this, it made it quite, quite complicated. The department has also talked about releasing some guidelines for informal meetings as well, which will potentially influence our policy.
So, so given the 6.2, meetings open to the public, what means do we have there to have those, to continue those informal meetings, ensuring that we're still compliant with those?
The all meetings required to be open to the public does not apply to informal meetings, they are only formal decision-making forums of local government, so our special meetings, our general meetings.
Okay, so with informal meetings, we're looking at adopting a policy at some point in the future for informal meetings? Yep?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. And the last one I had was, I think it is item 6.6. I'd just like to raise for consideration for councillors, I think it states that we will have the notice given to councillors. Sorry, is it, is it agenda for meetings? It might be no, 6.4, is it?
Yep.
6.6, there's a table councillor, good luck, on page five of the policy.
Yep, sorry, there we go, thank you. 6.6, notice given to councillors on the Friday. I would prefer to move that to perhaps the Monday prior or even the Friday prior to that, to give councillors a week or more to read the agenda and be prepared for the meeting. Quite often I'm, well, I know we're all very busy, quite often working weekends and attending community functions etcetera on weekends and evenings over the weekend, and sometimes that will be difficult for me to make sure that I'm well across the agenda just in a two-day period. So I'd like to put that out for consideration if councillors are happy to change the timing to just sort of giving the council team a week, which I understand is about the same that we've been accustomed to in, over recent years, so.
Yep, so prior to the implementation of these changes, we had been working with the week and essentially closing agendas on the Tuesday and the publishing on the Wednesday. So the only, the only risk on, and we can happily outwork whatever your decision is in this space. The only thing I will point out is there probably is some reports in that where the timeliness of some of that data and some of that information you're considering may become a little bit long in the tooth, so to speak, once we, if we're going an additional week earlier. Thinking of things like financial reports and the like, we weren't hitting end of month and the like, we were bringing, we're amending dates to meet the previous timeframe. Actually, moving it to the current date does actually work well, but we can outwork the intent, it's just to recognise that there will be, may be some issues with timeliness, but as long as, I guess, there's a mutual understanding around that, that's fine.
Also, just to note that under the regulations, that the agenda will be public, must be published to the public by 5pm on the following business day. So obviously councillors may want to digest that information in the agenda. That's a matter for council.
And I think that's, that's a good thing for the public to get extra time. I'm always happy to consider, you know, I understand there's urgent times where we have business that needs to be brought up in an urgent manner, but for the, for the most part, if we've got that week. So I think if we changed the, the table on the, on the policy from the Thursday where it's submitted to councillors, is that correct, and then?
It's currently the Friday.
It's currently Friday.
The Thursday was the special meeting. The Thursdays to officers. So the Friday, if we change the Friday to, to the Monday prior, that gives an extra five days essentially. Is that how that works? Is that?
Currently it's the Tuesday prior, so a week before the meeting. Would that be suitable or you'd like the Monday?
Oh, a week prior, that's, you got, yeah, if you got, you know what I'm saying. I'll let you work out the day, it's too complicated for me.
If we release on a, so we have a general meeting on a Tuesday, if we release on the Tuesday before, we can do that, that's in line with current standards.
Yep.
Any, any earlier than that, and our officers need a week before that to...
No, no, that's perfect. I'm happy with the Tuesday to, if we can make that amendment, and happy to hear from other councillors.
I know councillor Muscat has questions. On that, Tuesday is, so we're gonna have our officers sitting in council information sessions and council briefings or council meetings on a Tuesday, and then we expect them to publish an agenda the same day, maybe a day later at least. Can you go with the Wednesday? Because I think we're gonna have to give officers time to actually upload the information, otherwise they're gonna have to actually have it done on the Monday, because Tuesdays they're in here.
What I'm hearing now, that's the current process.
I thought you wanted to be live at that point.
Currently we publish on the Tuesday or Wednesday before. If we could have that Wednesday, sometimes is an issue with being at council meetings and having to run an agenda, a Wednesday would be generous.
Did you say you published them on the Tuesday? At the moment, don't we get them a lot later in the week?
Now? Yes, since the introduction of the legislation, sorry, prior to the new legislation.
Yep. Okay, yeah. I think we get, understand the intent. I think most councillors are happy to have more time to read it, and happy for the community to have more time to read it as well, so.
Happy with Wednesday.
My point was actually in relation to the same, the same part of the policy, so I really would like a little bit more time to read the agendas. Well, I mean, sometimes they're not long, but other times they are, and I think we need a bit more time to sort of digest some of that stuff and also look for extra information if we need. So I will appreciate if we can move it up for, you know, even if it's two or three days, that will be enough for me. And I also think there's value in having the agendas published to the public, you know, a bit earlier, not just five o'clock the day before of the meeting.
Yeah, I think we like to probably make them available to councillors on Wednesday, public by Tuesday, by Thursday, don't go back about that day. Okay, councillor Muscat, do you have other questions?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. That was all that I was gonna raise. Thank you.
Any other councillors have questions on this item? Can I, so do we need to amend that bit then? Councillor Goodluck, would you like to move a motion amending that?
I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation as amended, just with that, with that timing and that graph.
Happy to second that amendment, with that amendment that councillor Khan has proposed.
Right, move councillor Goodluck, second councillor Churchill, that the motion be adopted as amended with different timeframes, more time for councillors and for the community to understand and read the agenda. All in favour? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is S1.2, which is Audit, Risk and Improvement Committee Policy Review. To you, Tanya and Mark.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this review is coming to you a little bit ahead of schedule with respect to the Audit, Risk and Improvement Committee policy. So in line with the decision to change the name of the policy, we've taken that opportunity to, just to make sure the balance of the policy is, is working for, working for you. So we've engaged with the Audit, Risk and Improvement Committee to get their feedback as well on, on what's working and what's not from a external member, bearing in mind we have three external members in that space. So as long as just the name, we've also incorporated the incorporation of conflicts of, conflicts of interest. We've just realigned some of the, the functional areas that have changed during the timing of this, between policy reviews. We've looked at also the self-assessment, we've actually just put that out every two years rather than annually, and that was at the request of the external members. Certainly made sure that the, it was explicit that the mayor was there as an ex-officio member, and we've also just obviously then updated the naming. So happy to take your questions.
Any questions councillors? No questions? Can I have a, sorry councillor Grady, you have a question? Happy to move councillor Grady to move, second please. Councillor Muscat, all in favour? Motion's carried. Thank you councillors, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the contract, S1.3, which is Contract Staff Remuneration Policy. Sorry, I did have a printout of this and it's, was on my desk and it's gone, but we'll just have to talk through this.
Thank you councillors for this opportunity to present this policy. The reason for the request is that we currently do not have a policy that guides us in terms of how we determine direct contract staff remuneration, and also how do we go about doing salary reviews for those levels. The policy, I would take that as read. There's also a report from LGAQ that was circulated to councillors, and I'm happy to take any questions regarding this. Perhaps before we start, I could just say I've also read through that advice from LGAQ this morning, and there are a few points that they are making that we need to consider. They talk about the relevance of the benchmark that is proposed. I'm comfortable that the benchmark that we are proposing is relevant, and in particular they mentioned that it is a benchmark across Australia. The same benchmark also show it per region, so we will be focusing on the Queensland as a relevant region for us. They made a comment about the term that we proposed for contracts between three and five years, and say that is, they would be comfortable with that in terms of their feedback as well. They are making some comments about the term of the CEO to fall not, not to expire within 12 months before an election, and not within 12 months after election, so to time that and that having the ability to negotiate a contract between three and five years would be able to give council that outcome. Also, they suggest a protection for the mayor in terms of delegation and signing off on a derumination suggestion for the CEO. I think we need to take that into consideration and might, will require a change to this policy. And then they also talk about what's the objectives of, of doing this policy in the first instance, and the objective is we do not have a policy and we would like to have a policy that guides our decision-making. Happy to take any questions?
Questions councillors?
Yeah, through the mayor, I think we've all had a look at that email that was sent this morning. It's pretty detailed, but he's got some points there, and you've mentioned some of them, Tinas. Just like to know the dollar value, I think he's mentioned that between the 50th and the 75th percentile. Do you, do you have a dollar value on that?
No, I haven't got a dollar value this morning, I've only read it this morning. However, what I did put in the report, which is also part of that email, is that 77% of our staff on, on direct contracts are between minus five and plus five percent of the 50th percentile. The objective is not to start to increase our existing staff remuneration towards the 75th percentile, but it does provide an opportunity when you recruit to consider what is the value that's on offer and experience and so forth, and then make a decision within that band. So there's no object, no objective to start to increase salaries of executives. Where we have, where we're far below the 50th percentile, in other words, the average or the mean of the market, we have an opportunity to over time bring that closer to the mean, but that's not an objective to increase it to that level. And it is, it's easy to track and monitor against the current baseline, which will tell us whether we are seeing a salary creep or a remuneration creep happening over time, and that's something that's totally within our ability to manage.
Also through the mayor. You say throughout the policy that the reasons we have to get, we need to have a policy, yes, was that, is because we can't attract people into these positions. I, I just want to know, what is our movement in that area in the last two to three years? Do we have a real problem? I know we have a problem probably a little bit lower down with engineers and whatever. Is that a reason enough to?
It is, I think it's two things. The one is, it's attraction and retention. You won't know who are you losing as a result of your ranges, and now you set your timeframe. Specifically, as it relates to the current timeframes, it could potentially be a challenge of three years, especially if you have families that have to move into the area and have to relocate to Queensland, that is a challenge. In terms of retaining our staff, we do not have a significant problem at the moment. It's the, the main objective of this policy is to create a benchmark that we can use, and that's why there's also not a need for us to, after this policy is approved now, to go and shift salaries. That's not a requirement because we do not have a significant turnover on our manager or level ones to threes at the moment. It's more about creating for us a guideline and a consistent benchmark that we can use.
Another one, if I just may...
Got a few of myself, so.
Should we have something written in there, in the policy about performance evaluation? Or is that into another policy? We, I think we should always have some mention in there about performance evaluation on managerial positions.
I don't think the objective of this policy was to specifically talk about the performance evaluations. Happy for us to consider how we, how we do that, but it is an objective of council, we're currently working on that whole process.
I know that.
But I would say that would be a different policy.
Councillor Goodluck, then councillor Churchill?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thanks, Tinas. I was, I understand what you're saying about the, you know, it gives a benchmark, and I'm all for paying, you know, our contract staff fair and reasonable, you know, remuneration standards. But also, I think the 77% are at the bottom end, and whilst there's no, not necessarily an obligation for us to then go and just automatically up everyone's remuneration, it's certainly, if I was a contract staff, I'd be well aware of this policy, and I'd be well aware of where I sit within the band and, or the benchmark, and I'd certainly be making sure that I, and looking to be moving up that benchmark, which everyone would be in that same position. So it does, this policy does represent a potential, and I haven't got the dollars in front of me, so I'm a little bit hesitant to make a decision today without the dollars. I'm fairly confident that I'd probably support the policy irrespective anyway, because I understand the intent, but I, I think I'd like to see what sort of implication we're actually having on the, on the bottom line with this policy. The other, the other point that I did think was the most relevant point to me, reading the commentary from the LGAQ, was around whether we have other issues contributing to the turnover or loss of staff. So I know... So, I, I know you said before that that, that doesn't seem to be an issue that we're, that we really have, can you, can you give me some more confidence around that?
Absolutely, we, the, the main objective of the policy is to create, to have a policy that guides us in our decision-making. It's not necessarily at this stage to manage retention. It will enhance our value proposition if we could, you know, consider what the value is an employee can bring on that level, and have a bit more flexibility in terms of where we benchmarked in that entry for staff. For example, if we would go out to advertise, you won't advertise at the 75th percentile, you won't even advertise a range to the 75th percentile, you would set your range below the 50th to about midway between the 50th and the 75th, to leave council with that opportunity with headroom, and we can manage that effectively. It's totally within our control, and there's a, the concern raised about 77 being, being plus minus of the 50th percentile. The 50th percentile is not a bad mark to be at for council at all as, as a starting point. That just means that 50% of comparative councils within Queensland are paying more than us, and 50% of comparative councils are paying less than us. So we're fairly close to what the benchmark is in Queensland for the same size of council. I'm not concerned about that 77%. Those that are in ranges like 10 and 50%, I think I've seen three or four out of that whole group that are in that range, those are the ones that we'll need to look at over time. To achieve that, we've agreed a lower level of increase this year for the levels two and three, and we've left a little bit of headroom in the, in our budget to be able to bring those who are far below the, the benchmark closer to the benchmark, but we don't see a massive shift in that. I can then work out what's the potential risk to council, but it's absolutely within the control of the CEO in terms of anything that comes up as a proposed remuneration review for any officer. It's totally within our control to manage that process.
And the MacArthur survey, is that, is that Queensland or is that Australia?
The MacArthur survey covers the whole of Australia, and it also gives you a per-region outcome, and we focus on the Queensland relative councils. But we can have a view about how does New South Wales and all the other states look like, and what is the overall, overall what's the mean and so forth, but we will be focusing on Queensland relevant to our region.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I just wanted to point out the, there's a couple of points made around policy, one for the contracted staff, including a clause around that the policies do not form part of the employment contract, and also a clause in the, that the mayor be delegated the authority to approve remun, the remuneration level, sorry, for the CEO, but is required to report to council in order to protect the mayor. So we're, we're going to incorporate those into the, into the policy. Do we need to move with those amendments today, or is that something that's in the?
I'm happy to bring it back, given that I've only read it this morning, and the wording that I would suggest there, that the mayor will elect a CEO Performance and Salary Review Committee, which has already happened, and after this committee has determined the proposed salary of the CEO, and after that's been shared with the council, the, the mayor has the delegation to approve the CEO's salary. That will provide that protection. So I think it's very good feedback from LGAQ to protect the mayor and the CEO in terms of their advice there, and happy to make that amendment to 6.5 of the policy.
Thank you.
I had questions on the other side, but while we're talking, the remuneration section, the, so the new legislation means basically councillor out of the, off the table when talking about general management's salary. It's totally up to the CEO now, is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
I'd just like to clarify that, the council sets the budget, so that's a control mechanism that council has.
But this policy would provide us with, within, how do you apply that thinking in terms of determining those salaries?
If I may, Mr Mayor, and my thinking was that that would inform your budget discussions because any changes to salaries are effective from first of July, so it would be discussed through that process with the benchmark information, and that, I believe, would be the opportunity. There may be circumstances during the year on individual basis that may arise, but I think there would be a good level of oversight of council.
And then just from what councillor Goodluck said about the, the policy doesn't form part of their contract, is that what?
At the moment, I cannot confirm that, I've not read it to that detail, however, for, I'll make sure that we do talk to LGAQ to get the latest versions of, of contracts for the senior officers, and make sure that that clause is in the contract, and with the signing of all new contracts, we can just make that part of that and ensure it's in there. Existing contracts are what they are.
This one from me on that particular issue, and in regards to MacArthur, I'm not going to suggest other, other companies, because I probably have conflicts there, but why MacArthur?
Only reason we've suggested MacArthur, I've been in the last six years, I would say, I've, I've looked at the market to see for any other benchmark or salary surveys that are as comprehensive. Out of the 270 odd councils across Australia, MacArthur surveyed, the last survey, I think was 207 of those, so it's the most comprehensive survey out in the market, it breaks it up. And I know one of the risks that's mentioned in the LGAQ feedback is whether you are comparing the right jobs with the right jobs. What we have done with level one, two and three, and actual fact with all of our direct contract staff, we've done a specific benchmark where we've sent the position description to MacArthur to then compare the position, what's in the position description with other councils of the same size and their position descriptions, and then they found a benchmark specifically for those. So they've, we've gone an extra step to make sure that our information is relevant, and we are benchmarking against like-for-like positions across the Queensland councils, comparative councils. So we've taken that extra step.
Does it actually refer to MacArthur though, other than in our report, in the policy? Do we have to use MacArthur is what I'm getting at? Or can we leave it up to the, to yourself as the general manager of people, performance and safety to, to choose someone?
I'm happy to do that, because I think MacArthur's could not exist tomorrow, so I think we can change that just to refer to a comparative benchmark, and to say that it, it needs to something that is relevant and is representative of local government in Queensland. So if we find, come across one that's more comprehensive, provides for better outcomes, definitely will use that.
Councillors, other questions? Was it councillor Churchill? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Matt. Most of my questions have been answered during that discussion, I suppose in the essence of meeting procedures, by five minutes, I'll make this brief.
On this item, we can have ten.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think probably first and foremost, I, I applaud the intent of putting this policy in place, but I'm also very mindful of some aspects, and councillor Hanson referred to the performance, or more so the performance appraisals, but it's not only just the performance appraisals, it's the value of feedback that you get from separation interviews as well. In understanding the principle of that, it's not always about the dollars, it's about the attraction of working for the organisation, it's about the appeal of coming and living in the region, and the list goes on. And I, I tend to agree that somewhere in amongst that, the synergy of the value of that information feeds into the policy. I just wanted to make a further reference to it as well, and I understand the 50th to the 75th percentile, which gives some variable scope, but it was good that we've gone to the LGAQ, and we're only privy to that information, be it yesterday from, from Tony Good and the LGAQ, and all local governments perhaps are looking at this, but, and we've got MacArthur's, but is there any reason why we haven't also sought advice from the LGMA, the Local Government Managers Association effectively, who are a representative organisation of the people? Fair enough, as a council, we are a member-based service to the LGAQ, but I just feel that there would also be a value, there may be a value, there may not be, it might be biased, and I don't want to speculate on that, but the Local Government Managers Association, I'm sure would be probably at, well and truly at the forefront of this in trying to get an understanding, so I'd like to hear your feedback on that. And the last part of it is that, that I did open up by suggesting that, that I'm supportive of the intent of the policy, but, but very mindful that we can review these policies at any time. So in, in implementing or introducing a policy position at this particular stage, we as elected members still have that scope to be able to bring that policy back, subject to information that may come to us, to ensure that we not only are well informed on it, but we are current with what the state of play is within the marketplace. So, I'd value your feedback on that.
Thank you councillor. We have, in our process, not gone out to seek advice from others, I think the principle of determining a remuneration is you need to take a position, where do you want to play, and, and how do you compete, and then you have to use relevant information, and in the process of comparing ourselves, we felt that we do have a survey available, and we've done an additional step to make sure that we absolutely know what we need to know, to know what the situation is in, or the benchmark is in local government. So we've not gone out to other associations or even to the Local Government Management Association to determine policy.
Excuse, excuse me, Tinas, may I just speak to that one? The LGMA has been working with the LGAQ on matters relating to consistent contracts for CEOs as one matter, and this issue of benchmarks for senior executive salaries has been canvassed. Covid interrupted that work, so, sorry, Tinas wouldn't be privy to that, I was on a teleconference on Friday where it was raised again, so there, there is an attempt to try and bring together those different points of view, to have some sort of consistency across the industry. Sorry to interrupt Tinas, but that just happened on Friday.
Regarding the turnover, I would just say, I absolutely agree that salary gets people through the door, the culture keeps them here, the collegiate working environment, the way they work with their managers, and recently we had a turnover of three engineers, and I thought, let me just have a, a personal exit interview with all three of them, and the feedback was not about salary, they said that when you advertise a position and I apply for it, I know what I'm getting into, I know that I'm in a different sector than the mining sector or the smelters, so I accept that, but what we do value is the work-life balance, we man, we value the culture in the organisation, and none of them left for any reason particular to salary. They left for more opportunities for their children and after school, terms of university, going to university, two of those engineers, council was the first local government job for them, and two of them are going back to local government in Brisbane, so that's good, we've added, and they couldn't speak more highly of the support they got from their managers and, and their general manager, and the development they received at council, very appreciative, very constructive feedback to council, which was really valuable to receive.
Yeah, thanks for that feedback, I suppose my comment in, in response to that is, that's the value of going with our current Gladstone Region Economic Development Strategy, while it's all encompassing for the whole region, that's the sort of information that needs to be reiterated or emphasised in the economic development strategy, is that it's the life, work, family balance, quality of living, health services, infrastructure, and the list goes on. Thank you.
Exactly.
I'll throw to councillor Goodluck, I mean, following on from his question regarding cost, there was one item in the LGAQ email which would indicate potential significant costs, and it's very uncomfortable when you're talking about the staff wages and the people you're talking about are in the room and watching on live stream as well, but particularly in the room with us right now, it says that a significant percentage would be just over the 50%, if it goes to the 75, if the, I'm not saying Lisa would do this, but by adopting the policy, it basically is the CEO, the rubber stamp to go and increase salaries for, obviously not necessarily currently within budget, but with increased salaries to all contract staff to the 75th percentile, which we have clearly not budgeted for this year, but what's, but that could easily happen next year's budget because it's part of this. So that, I need, well, I think I need to understand the cost of what this is saying, when specifically with, I think it's almost half of our contract staff, according to the MacArthur review, nowhere, nowhere near the 75th percentile.
I'm happy to bring that to council and, and show what the potential cost could be as a, as a bulk, but also with how we will manage that, the, those processes are not, you know, random processes, it would be something that we would manage procedurally in a way that we could do it. If we need to review for those staff who's fallen far below the 50th percentile, then we will do that most likely once a year, and my suggestion would be that you would do that around January, but that you have provided, that it's a clear process and not that you get little salary creeps throughout the year, and we can look at that, but I am comfortable with where we are, that there's no need to go out and, and act upon this in a way that put council at risk in any way, there's, there's, there's a budget that's approved and we need to remain within that.
Councillor Goodluck, my last comment on that is, we have a significant, almost 700 staff, majority of those are not on contract, I would hate to see percentages of senior executives going up 10, 15, 20% when our, our majority of our workforce are going up around the, you know, less than five, you know, ones, twos and threes percent, so it does concern me the cost here, I would do, councillor Goodluck.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Tinas, who are we, I, I support the intent of this policy, I understand that we operate in a competitive market, and the ability for the Gladstone Regional Council to attract and retain a skilled workforce, particularly in that contract staff space, you know, highly skilled and qualified engineers, et cetera, managers, you know, that's critically important for our community so that we can provide the services that we need to be able to provide and propel our region forward. But I, you know, my particular feeling when I was reading this policy was in relation to the, to the three engineers that you, that you mentioned, that we, you know, we lost three engineers only in, in, in recent months, which dramatically impacts our ability to, to do that, you know, planning and design and, and deliver at the end of the day. So it is a, it is a real issue that we're facing, but then I, I just heard that you said that, you know, remuneration was not an issue for those three engineers. So my thinking, to be honest, when I was reading this policy and this, this agenda item, I was thinking that was my main issue, that I was thinking, well, maybe we're not paying our engineers enough and we need to, we need to up, up our remuneration to try and attract them and, and keep them here, but that's not apparently the issue for those particular individuals. So my question is, who, who are we targeting? What, what's the disciplines or the qualifications that we, that we need to target for this particular policy?
So this policy covers level one, two, three and four, so that would be the CEO, the general managers, all the department heads and specialists, and those specialists are also specific skills that are outside of the, the certified agreement, so they're not covered by the certified agreement. The engineers that councillor just mentioned are covered by the enterprise agreement at the moment, there's a thinking to look at whether we could move them outside because of their specialist nature. What we have done with the engineers, we've done a specialized, special market survey as well, we are a little bit below the market, and so for some of the engineers to attract them, we have paid them above the award to, to bring them in line with what is the 50th percentile of the market. It's worked for us, so I can report also after three engineers, two were replaced, and we've also been able to attract a long outstanding water engineer into the water team in the last month, so we appointed three engineers in the last two weeks.
Fantastic. So, well, thank you, that's good, that's good news, I'm glad to hear that. Once again though, what's the issue that we're trying to fix here then?
The issue we try to fix is, sorry?
May, may I just, one of the issues that I see and have experienced in a tangible way is the parity between EBA employees and contract employees, and I've had situations where people who've applied for jobs have not then accepted them because they don't see the remuneration as being of sufficient value to give up their benefits as an EBA employee, so there is, there is an issue of parity and part of our culture across the organisation, and there's certainty to our EBA employees as well, they know the increases that have been agreed to, so I think that's an issue as well. And just to circle back, I know there was, I think it was the mayor and councillor Trevor were on a panel with me for a general manager before the regulation changed, and it was someone we were attempting to recruit from one of those other industries, and, and they were paid well in excess of what we were offering, and, and that didn't eventuate, but in that circumstance, that was okay, but I think it does- But I think it does happen sometimes. You may want a particular talent that you need to have a little bit more flexibility with. But I think that equity and parity issue is a consideration for some of our people. Particularly at the top of the EBA band, yeah, people, the difference between your highest level on EBA and your starting level on contracts can cause some issues.
So just lastly from me, Mr Mayor, I understand the intent of the policy. And I get what you're saying, Madam CEO, and I think I'll support it. But I think I'd like to see the figures before. So I'm not sure if this is an urgent item, if we can bring it back to the next meeting. I'd just like to see, just so I have an understanding of that impact.
I would certainly suggest that this policy be brought back, given the number of amendments that have been floated and some of the questions that have been asked. I think it would be unwise to adopt today.
May I move to defer the matter on the basis of additional information being provided relevant to what we've already discussed and any other matters that may arise between now and when it comes back to the next council meeting?
Would you like to specify a timeframe for when that, I think we need to do that?
Well, I'd be guided by the general managers or more so those that are the author of the policy or the development of the policy, so.
I'm happy if councillors are for it to come back the next meeting. I know that it's already been deferred once, that was to get the advice from LGAQ. It was comprehensive advice and I wanted to read it before I forwarded it on, but then I didn't realise it was coming up this quickly. So, and with the new change of legislation, getting our agendas later than normal. So I think maybe the next council meeting, if that gives you time, Tennis?
I don't believe it does, Mr Mayor, because that agenda closes tomorrow. So given our timeframe of having the agendas that we've discussed, so the following meeting, is that achievable?
No, I'm happy to accept that in the motion, just defer it until four weeks. We'll bring it back to the meeting in four weeks' time. No, no special meaning.
Did you move that, councillor, good luck? Councillor Churchill's moving it then, and I'll have a second, please. Second and councillor O'Grady, we defer to not the next, but the one after council meeting. Thank you, whatever date that will be, probably late November, early December, first week in December. Put the motion all in favour? Carried, thank you, councillor, thank you, Tennis. Next item on the agenda then, we can break for morning tea, is S, sorry, 1.4, is it? 1.4, the naming of infrastructure assets policy.
Thanks again, Mayor and councillors. This policy is your policy that guides the naming of your infrastructure assets. It has been brought back in consideration of the addition of the provision of allowing essentially two named names on a, on a street where that person is a, has provided significant service to the community. It's, this policy still provides a number of guidelines in and around essentially the length, ideally, that we'd like to see of roads and the criteria we like to put around those, recognizing that the name of infrastructure needs to be well understood by not only council, but all your emergency services and the community at large. So happy for, to take any questions.
Councillor Trevor?
I just wanted some clarity, Mark, in relation to the allocation of two words, as in Mark Holmes. For the naming of our infrastructure, other than roads. Is it the case that if we have a new building and we wish to dedicate it to a longstanding community champion, we can only use that person's surname? Or can we use that person's Christian names and surname, even though it's not a road?
It is proposed that this is used beyond just, is for infrastructure, so infrastructure beyond roads. So it is proposed to be applied to those.
Like Alf Larson Park, Tom Jeffrey Park, those sorts of things.
Yes. So I was just seeking clarity in relation to that, that we weren't just restricted to the use of a surname only for roads, sorry, for, to the Christian and surname for roads. So we can use the Christian and surname for any infrastructure now, pursuant to this policy. Beautiful.
And I believe that was always the case, wasn't it, Mark? It was just the roads where the policy said one, because for ease of, you know, for emergency services and other reasons, so.
Yeah, so that was essentially already available to you.
O'Grady?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just following on from councillor Trevor, so if it's in two names, husband and wife, like we've done before, is that acceptable? How does that work? Yeah, yeah, exactly, like Frank and Barb McKee.
I guess we haven't considered adding a third, essentially a third name in there, but then it's really going to be a principle. So this is one of those policies that really is about guiding application. I guess one of those things, if you were to receive an application or to consider that or adding those people to your approved names register, we'd have to do that. And that would probably be the process in which way you would do it, is actually you add them to your approved names register and then we'd look at how we may be able to apply those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? Can I have a mover for the officer's recommendation, please? Councillor Trevor, second and councillor Hanson, I got that in there, fantastic. Well done, Rick. Come on board, all in favour?
What do you, what do you mean by that, Mr Mayor?
It's good to see you on board. Very good process, all in favour?
I'm just following process.
Thank you, carried unanimously, and I'll note that councillor Hanson voted in favour of that. Okay, councillors, we'll break for morning tea and we're back shortly.
Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council, connect, innovate, diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council - Connect, Innovate, Diversify. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au. Gladstone Regional Council are committed to fostering a proud, involved and engaged community. The Gladstone Regional Council Community Investment Programme provides financial support to local community initiatives, projects and events which promote community connections, regional enhancements, community celebrations and community education. For more information on the Community Investment Programme, visit gladstone.qld.gov.au.
Welcome back to those watching on the live stream. We recommence the meeting now. The next item on the agenda is S 1.5, which just changes to delegation and annual review of delegations. Over to you, the CEO. No, over to you, Mark. Thank you.
Morning, Mayor and councillors. This is part of our annual review of the many statutory obligations that council has under various pieces of legislation that we work with through a subscription service with LGAQ, looking through what are the changes there and what are the implications to us from a delegation's perspective to make sure that we are outworking those officially as possible. There is an attachment that details all of the many changes there, but a summary of the changes is listed in the report. Vicky Hankinson has prepared this report and is available online to answer any questions that we may not be able to answer in the room.
Any questions, councillors? I can tell you if Vicky's organised this, it'll be spot on. I'm over to the officers' recommendation, please. Thank you, councillor Churchill, sorry, Trevor, seconding councillor. Good luck, all in favour. That's carried. The next item on the agenda is S 6, 1.6, which is service and facilities management options for the Philip Street Communities Precinct. Over to you, Kylie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, councillor, CEO and those joining us online. This morning, we're discussing the Philip Street Communities and Families Precinct operating model options. Basically, in June 2018, we approved to explore operating models for the 17.9 million Philip Street Communities and Families Precinct. In May 2020, council engaged a consultant to explore the operating model for the precinct. The engagement exercise was impacted by COVID-19, however, some individual interviews were held, allowing for stakeholder engagement and input into the operating model. However, it didn't allow for collective decision-making. The report analysed three models, the advisory committee and Gladstone Regional Council, a lead agency or an incorporated association. A risk analysis has been undertaken on all three models and the opportunities and challenges are presented within the report and attached to the report. The recommended option today provided by officers is option one, with the collaboration of an advisory committee and GRC. This option will see council commit to the facility management and service coordination responsibilities for a period of 24 months, followed by a review of the operating model's successes and challenges. The activities undertaken will be to establish the referral pathways with the primary and allied health services, to consult with human and social services sector representatives, to engage with human and social service providers, to facilitate the inter-agency collaboration and consultation, to provide customer engagement, coordination and info services, managing long-term tenancies, visiting arrangements and community meeting amenities, excuse me, and coordination of ground and building maintenance and management. This option will also see transferring some or part of council's existing engagement and partnerships team to provide those referrals services and the above activities. This was the intention, the design of the precinct as indicated in the floor plans of the CAS Building 01A. This option also will establish a formal advisory committee or a steering committee consisting of community members and key stakeholders, which will connect the community to the precinct, inform future service delivery and infrastructure development. And the fourth part of our recommendation today is to collaborate with the Salvation Army to seek an EOI for identified service providers. This recommendation has the support of the Philip Street Working Group and is aligned with the precinct's visions and council's risk profile. I will take the reporter's red councillors and invite your questions or discussions on the proposed operating model.
Thank you, Kylie. Questions to the general manager, please. Councillor Hanson.
Why am I always seen to be leading off on this?
She loves it so much.
Was I? I think I've mentioned this before, but do we actually have staff in this organisation that can offer sufficient facility management? And that's different to what you've talked about this morning. You know, all of those other things you've talked about this morning, there was no facility management in that as such, because I see this as an essential part of the maintenance. I know you've mentioned maintenance, the long-term health of the area. I'm not sure whether we've got those skills and it's essential we do, because I'm looking at the operating budget and it's over 2 point something million dollars. And we don't want, the last thing I want to see is for that sort of budget to blow out to 4 million, you know what I mean? If we're not correctly operating the facility. And what's the engagement with, if you may, just double-barrel question, with the Salvation Army on that? I know they're leasing the buildings. We've got the onus on facility management of that as well, or does that they have their own facility management charter?
No, so the facility management, so when you're saying facility management, councillor Hanson, I'm assuming the coordination of the services that are at the precinct, is that what you're meaning by that?
It's more than that.
You're meaning the actual maintenance and the asset management?
Yes, it's more than that. It's asset management, yeah.
So the asset management, I definitely have the resources there from council. So we have a facilities and logistics specialist who currently maintains our community assets. So that person does have the experience to be able to do that. We also have a very close operational relationship with the SAP Strategic Asset Performance Team who help us achieve the maintenance, the asset management that we're looking for, for that precinct. With respect for managing and coordinating the site, we already do provide referral pathway services in our existing service delivery now. Yeah. Does that answer your question, councillor Hanson?
Somewhat, but it's a specialised field, facility management, as aside from all the other things that you're offering as well. So I just want to make sure that we're absolutely sound in that area, that's all. I might have another question, but I'll come back.
Councillor Cameron.
Yeah, look, Kylie, I think where councillor Hanson's coming from, as we've had a bit of experience in this with another community care situation, the running of these things and the accreditation that you've got to go through and all the processes associated with that are very, very intensive. And this is outside of just the asset management side of it, it's the actual accreditation side and keeping those things up to speed with, you know, to be compliant, to be within your regulations is very, very demanding. And what we've found is that unless you've got people with the depth of management that are up to speed with this, a voluntarily or in-house type committee could fall short of the marks. So is that sort of thing being taken into consideration?
I'll try to answer your question as best as I can, councillor Cameron. So we have a working group that's been established, they've been on board with us since 2018 and most likely that working group will transition into part of the advisory committee and their mandate will be to really strategically direct the service delivery of the precinct, any future infrastructure development and basically set the strategic direction for the precinct. Underneath that layer will be the engagement and partnerships team in collaboration with our strategic asset performance team and our facilities and maintenance people. I believe that collective group have the experience to run a facility such as this.
Okay. Is your ultimate goal to have a professional service provider run the day-to-day running of this overseen by this committee?
So it will be a mix of individual service providers. So with the Salvation Army, we're going out for an expression of interest to get the service mix right for the precinct so that it meets the community's needs. So each of those services will be delivering their own services, will be coordinating it so that it's an inclusive approach that's appropriate for the precinct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors? Councillor Brentwood.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just in relation to the likes of proposed tenants or suppliers or providers of services within that area, the likes of Communities for Children, which is part of the GAPDL, I'm quite familiar with, but the likes of that was touted to be part of that.
Sorry, councillor, you had a conflict of interest with that?
Well, there is, if we're going to start talking about communities for children, I do.
All right, sorry.
But that's okay, I can leave the room if you want to talk about that.
Need to mention them individually or is that...?
Oh, I was using it as an example, Mr Mayor, that's all.
The likes of providers or tenants that may use move in there and not...
Oh, it's just, a lot of it's orientated around funding, that's all. And, you know, it's got to this pointy end of that sort of thing where those sort of decisions will be made, is this... be made. Is this group that you're looking at now forming with the facilities, with council and that, does that fulfil that role as well? Or just managing the property aspect of?
I'm sorry, if I may, I was under the understanding that we're discussing the operating model of the council buildings? Is that correct?
It's the operating model of the precinct councillor Muscat.
Okay, so is this also the, I guess the Salvation Army building, but, okay, but not necessarily, I think who's going in, that's going to go through a process anyway, so.
Sorry, I was just, sorry, I was just using it as an example because of the government funding rounds that are available for those sort of things. It's obviously going to be, a lot of our proponents are going to be subject to that. And is that the role of this group that you're proposing as an option?
No, I'm not sure if I'm answering you. Yeah, I might actually not understand your question completely.
It's a current example too councillor, it's a very current example and I know we've got a conflict of interest.
Sorry, yeah.
But, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
We wouldn't apply for the funding or?
No, 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 it was about more the management of who sort of did the role of the organisation. I was more touting along that sort of role, does that then facilitate those, whichever group goes in there, does that?
I think it's about, what are you trying to say, a management of partnerships?
No, the management of the facility and who goes in there.
I understand what you're saying councillor Branthwaite, sorry. So the advisory committee or the steering group, whichever name we land on, would be responsible for determining the service mix. Now, that needs to be relevant after a gap analysis of our services within the region and who should go in there.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodluck, question?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Thank you for the report Kylie and team and Eric and I know a longstanding project and a lot of work has gone into it. I think given the amount of investment that council's had, you know, in this facility and the necessity to make sure that it works as efficiently and as productively as possible, I am happy to support the officer's recommendation. I think that, I'm glad to see the 24-month review. No doubt within that next two years, we'll have a lot better understanding of how this facility is working, the sort of demand, how we might be able to, you know, look at other potential operating models and other opportunities for, you know, external operators and other things like that. So I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation. I just think it is necessary that we make sure that at the start of this project and its operating model, that we've got a great deal of investment in it and making sure that it works moving forward. So I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation, thanks.
Thank you. I have questions from councillor Trevor as well, but can I get a second for that motion please? Seconding councillor Branthwaite and then over to you councillor Trevor.
Thanks Mayor, I was just trying to, I was just trying to confirm in my own mind that the responsibility in formulating this proposal is not going to be, is not going to be, what's the best way to describe it? Perhaps I'll start again. I just wanted to make sure in my own mind that rather than delegating the responsibility of formulating this plan to a separate body to that of council, whether we do have the expertise and knowledge within our own organisation to stand alone and do this ourselves. I can see, I can see what you're trying to achieve here by appointing a group of community-minded people and an advisory body. But as long as that content involves some rigorous application of us so far as a hands-on situation is concerned, I just don't want to lose control of this, that's all. And if we do have specialists within our organisation, I would want them front and centre in relation to making any decisions or determinations in relation to outcomes involved in this precinct. I just, I just don't want to lose control of the operation and day-to-day management of all this. And whilst the intentions of an advisory group may well be good and may well be structured for the long-term benefit of the community, I just, I just feel compelled to say that I would like some hands-on experience from our organisation in relation to, to the committee and advisory board. I just, you know, I just don't want us pushing it away and saying, well, here you go, let's come up with a plan, only to find that at some point that backfires on us and the responsibility of us not taking it under our control has been lost, that's all.
Councillor Trevor, thank you. And certainly when we were deliberating on the option to recommend to council, we did really consider council's risk appetite around a facility, a community asset of that value. What we have balanced though is council's risk appetite, but also to try and meet the vision and that was a community-led facility for the community. So I think the balanced approach that we've delivered is having that community input from a strategic level and then using council where we're best used and that's in the operation of the facility. So in the recommendation that we've provided, I think we've balanced both of those areas.
Councillor Trevor, if I could just add from a governance point of view that as an advisory committee, if that's established, you will have to come back to council with the terms of reference and for council to decide the membership of that advisory committee. So there is another opportunity to provide some further guidelines around the operation of that committee.
Wow, that's great, thank you.
I do support the motion, but just particularly, it's the first time that we've had a chance to look at the consultant's report and just a couple of comments on that regarding future users. And I think on page 19 of that report, I was wrong. Oh yeah, on page, sorry, 18 of that report, they've listed the percentages of responses as potential users and that's health services has got 25%, education and employment has got 21% and the biggest other one is low socio, I can't say the word, status, 19%. I'm not sure whether we're going to get too many users in that area into that, into, to use that facility.
And that's why the expression of interest process is so valuable councillor Hanson. We really, we have our gap analysis now that's been identified through this report. So a targeted EOI process will be our next step.
Fantastic. Any further questions councillors? Councillor Churchill?
Yeah, thanks Mayor, man. I really just, and I'm totally supportive of the motion. I would just like to have it clear in my own mind at this stage, and maybe that's going to come as the officer indicated there before, might very well come in the area of the terms of reference, the terms of reference for the advisory committee. But I would like to just get an understanding and reading through the report, it's wonderful to read all of the report in finer detail, is the role of this advisory committee will be the governance, the decision-making, the operational aspects for the entire precinct?
Yes.
The entire precinct or the current footprint with respect to what is known as the family centre precinct? That's what I'd like to get an understanding because my interest is what will happen for the future with respect to aged care facilities, the management and the operation of aged care facilities and whatever else might be most appropriate that could fit within that precinct that will be beneficial to the city and our region and our people.
Thank you councillor Churchill for that question. The intent of the advisory committee is really for the Philip Street Communities and Families Precinct. How we are constructing that is their stage one, which we hopefully will deliver by June 2021 next year. And there's a second stage to that. So any future infrastructure or strategic development of the Communities and Families Precinct will have input from that advisory group. With respects to development of the entire Philip Street site, so the proposal to look into the retirement initiatives and other aspects of what's planned for that precinct, that will still be principally led by council. Where we will have value add is that group will be, you know, subject matter experts in that area and we would certainly benefit from their input, not necessarily their advice is what you will go with, but it allows us to have really consolidated engagement with people on the ground for how they could interact together in that precinct.
All right, thank you for that. Could we perhaps, or if I could respectfully ask, that that response and that information be taken into consideration in relation to the likelihood of the new term or the, I suppose, the inaugural terms of reference for this advisory committee when that comes back to council please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good idea. And the sooner we get an aged care retirement village project up in that facility, the better.
You're moving that, I'll second that.
Sure. Not sure what the motion would be, but let's just build it. Any other questions councillors? No? Can I have a move please? I think councillor Goodluck, it's already been moved. It's moved by councillor Goodluck, seconded by councillor Branthwaite. Any other questions? No, I put the motion all in favour. That's motion's carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is S 1.7 which is Community Investment Programme, Regional Enhancement Fund, Environmental Care. Still with you Kylie? Thank you.
Thank you Mr Mayor. I've got our manager of engagement and partnerships with me at the moment, Lee Griffiths. We're going to take you through a few of our community investment programme grants in the next two reports. The first one here is our, let me get the right paper, our environmental care report. Now, the environmental care is to really, our grant stream here is to really provide the assistance to the community to undertake those initiatives that can serve or enhance our environment across the region. It's really pleasing, we had four really great applications that have been received and assessed positively by our assessment panel. Noting that the applications were all around the $2,000 to $2,500 mark, the panel agreed in this instance to ensure that all four initiatives could be progressed, that we would fund at a limit of $2,000 per application, which would then exhaust the total of that particular funding stream at $8,000. So the recommendation is there. I invite any questions or feedback on our funding round.
Questions councillor Trevor? Being the office has recommended as it is?
Yes, thank you Mayor.
Everyone wins, okay. Councillor Churchill, you're seconding that? All in favour, sorry councillor, sorry councillor Cameron, do you have a question? You're ready to second as well? All right. Too easy, all in favour. Motion's carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda, oh sorry, before we go to the next item which is S 1.8, councillor Muscat has an item to raise.
Yes, thank you Mr Mayor. Earlier I neglected to mention that I wanted to discuss a personal interest and I was looking for councillor's feedback on this item. So GAPDL is one of the applicants here, so Gladstone Area Promotional Development Limited. And I actually, I sit in the board of directors of an organisation that we receives funding from GAPDL. It's not related to any of the tourism initiatives and I guess I just didn't know how to handle this. This could be a conflict, but I was looking for some feedback from you.
Yeah, well hang on, sorry councillor Trevor, before we go, when we're voting on conflicts, those who've got a conflict, are they able to vote on? They're not. So it's a matter of who gets to go first then. All right. Thank you councillor Trevor, you're out. Honestly, this legislation needs work.
I think it's a matter for councillor Muscat to determine whether you've got a conflict and then declare it if you think you have one and then we can vote based on your conflict. But I'm not sure that it, I think that's the process, sorry.
Councillor Goodluck, the meeting procedures leave it open for a councillor to raise a personal interest for discussion with councillors if they're having trouble coming to the point of view of whether or not there is a conflict of interest.
We just moved it a few, a couple, an hour ago.
Yeah, it leaves it up to us to just.
We moved ones that people declared.
New standing orders, new meeting agenda allows for that, but that's okay, we only just adopted that this morning. You run us through the, you just received funding from GAPDL for what?
It's actually related to the Communities for Children's project. So we have a contract to deliver some services for them and we, so we work together. I mean, Communities for Children is a project of GAPDL and it's not related to this matter. So I just wanted to put it out there. I don't believe I have a conflict in, when I read the rules. However, I just wanted to put it out there. Yep, the law. And I'm doing this following advice from our officers, so.
Funding recommended here is for a particular mini-market in Gendune Street, but it is funding going to an organisation which you receive, which is an organisation you worked for I'm assuming as well?
I'm a director of that organisation.
Receives money. It's arguably a conflict, probably, I don't know. Councillor Grady, do you have a comment?
In the past, have you, with your photography business with the GAPDL as well, wasn't it?
That was, I mean, whoever will require those services and I'm not, I don't know if I've ever worked for them, maybe a million years ago, but I'm not sure.
I'm not quite sure, I was just going to just.
But I mean, that's not the, we're sort of trying to navigate this sort of new, the new legislation and I guess this is very specific as to what the money's going to be used for. I believe that I can make a decision, an unbiased decision in this situation. I'm happy to declare.
I think that would be best if you could either declare or not declare and then we can make a decision from that, yeah. You're declaring, is it called a declarable interest?
It's a declarable conflict. So I, councillor Natalia Muscat, wish to declare a conflict of interest in item, item S 1.8, Community Investment Programme, Regional Enhancement Fund, Jump Start City Heart, as I am a director of Austro Communitys Limited, which has contractual arrangements with GAPDL.
Can I have a move whether a conflict exists please?
So can I just confirm that's not a prescribed conflict, is it? There's no contract with council, no gift, no donation?
No, never, not to me, no.
I was asking officers, weren't you? Tenure, is that correct?
Yes, it is a declarable conflict.
But is it a prescribed?
No.
Okay, thank you. There you go councillor Goodluck, that's the answer you were looking for. Anyone would like to move whether a conflict exists? Councillor Goodluck?
I move that there's no conflict, given that this matter before us today is not in relation to the funding proposal that's for consideration here. But I just wanted to, I must have missed that bit in the meeting procedures that we just passed, but as a councillor, I did read through the entirety of the document. I noticed that I've got an obligation to bring up any suspected conflicts that my colleagues. I noticed that I've got an obligation to bring up any suspected conflicts that my colleagues have, et cetera. I'm not sure, you know, in the situation that a councillor might raise the question to me about whether or not they have a conflict, and then I determine, you know, provide advice or something that might suggest they don't, and then that councillor doesn't end up declaring a conflict. You know, how is, well, how is that, have I fulfilled my obligations? Like, the way I look at it, we all need to come into the room, understanding what our conflicts are and declare them, and then have that discussion with our colleagues around how we manage those conflicts. That's, that's how I'd be...
Can we hold that there? That's a nice, that's a nice conversation for later, but at the moment we were just working on this, so what were you moving in relation to that?
Ma'am, before you accept the motion at this stage, can I just get a point of clarification, please? In understanding where councillor Muscat is coming from, being a director of the Communities for Children, which is a programme that sits under GAPDL, there's a simple question that needs to be answered here from our Communities for Children programme. Is the Communities for Children programme that you're a director of going to benefit in any way, shape or form from the artisans of Gendune Mini Market in any way, shape or form? Because if they do, then effectively you have a declarable conflict of interest.
Yes, councillor Churchill, thanks for that. Just to clarify, I'm not a director of Communities for Children or GAPDL, I'm just a director of an organisation that works with Communities for Children. So I don't, the organisation does not, I can't answer your question because I don't know what Communities for Children do, so I don't have any influence on how they use their money.
You subcontract to...
That's correct, yes.
Communities for Children.
So you don't know what you don't know at this particular stage, but is there any likelihood, is there any likelihood in any way, shape or form, from your perspective, that that particular programme, Communities for Children, that you're subcontracted to will play any active role in any way, shape or form in relation to the benefits that come as a result of artisans of Gendune Street Mini Market at any time?
No.
Thank you, good. Can I have a mover of whether a conflict exists? Councillor Goodluck?
I move again that no conflict exists.
Move councillor Goodluck, seconded by councillor Churchill, no conflict exists, put the motion all in favour. Motion's carried, thank you councillor Muscat, you can remain in the room. Over to you, oh, hang on, what are you doing? Councillor Branthwaite?
Sort of posed a question about my relationship with the GAPDL as well, because of a certain percentage of bookings handled with the GAPDL through my business. And, but again, it doesn't, doesn't pose any, any direct...
I've got an idea, how about you declare a prescribed interest, leave the room, we'll vote on this and you'll be back in thirty seconds.
Yeah, okay.
Talking two thousand dollars, I'm disagreeing.
I don't believe it's...
It probably doesn't, but there's significant potential financial benefit to councillor Branthwaite's business from GAPDL.
I'll have prescribed interest, I'd like to declare that with the GAPDL and I will leave the room.
I think that's the safest option.
Declarable conflict of interest, which you can still elect to leave the room, I don't believe it...
There's financial benefit potential to councillor Branthwaite.
That's not a prescribed conflict.
There's no element of material, there's no element of potential benefit or loss in the prescribed conflict of interest, so prescribed conflicts of interest relate directly to gifts and loans, travel and accommodation benefit, and then there's additional provisions for entering into an agreement or making an application to council.
Sorry, declarable interest then, and I still think you should just leave the room and we can vote on this and be done.
And myself, as being a board member appointed by council to the GAPDL, I've checked with our governance officer, and that is not a conflict of interest, so I'm staying, that's the reason why I'm staying in the room.
Sorry councillor Churchill, before you jump in, are you happy with that? Councillor Branthwaite, declarable interest and you're happy to leave the room?
I am.
Thank you, would you be able to leave the room, please? We'll be voting, we'll be back on this in two seconds after you leave the room, it's two thousand dollars. Thank you. Over to you Kylie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Jump Start City Heart funding is really designed to support our community organisations or businesses in stimulating the CBD economy and also engaging communities and visitors and really uplifting the aesthetics of the CBD. We received two applications in this particular funding round, one from GAPDL to host a mini market for artisans in the lead up to Christmas, and another from Ban Thai, Thai Restaurant around street front beautification. The only reason the Ban Thai application has been not recommended for funding is it didn't include a approval to work on roads, they were putting pots outside of their deck which were on the roadside. We will be working with Ban Thai to increase their capacity so that we can approve future funding applications from that particular group. Invite any questions?
Questions, please? No questions, can I have a mover for the officers recommend, oh, you have a question? Sorry councillor Goodluck, over to you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The artisans of Gendune Mini Market, great, great idea, support the intent. I note that we've, we've done this before, or a version of, it seems to have failed each and every time, and the, the two thousand dollars to developing merchandise, market layout and promotional materials, I'm not sure how hard it is to develop a market layout and I'm not sure that, do we need to, I'm trying to ask, is it, is it a good, I know it's gone through the panel assessment, it's come back just above the acceptable lines marginally, which is probably why I'm raising the queries. Would, I sort of look at this event, and I'm not, I'm not saying the event's not a good idea or not a good event, I support the idea of it. Do we need to spend two thousand dollars on that material when I sort of think that the event can proceed without that? And is this going to be a one-off event? Sorry, I didn't see, or is it a, is it a continuing?
From the application and the discussions that we've had with GAPDL, this particular event does have, it has the opportunity to succeed, and I think particularly in the time range that they're willing to do it around the Christmas, the festive season. Both myself and the manager of events and entertainment are working alongside GAPDL to ensure that this event is a success in the CBD. The two thousand dollars requested, really, marketing of the event would probably consume the majority of that amount in itself.
I've run it through you, ma'am, I've only got one comment to make, is that if we're looking at these type of things, we're talking two thousand, I totally support the initiative, but we actually have a major service level agreement with GAPDL as a regional tourism organisation, promotion and marketing and everything else. These are the type of projects that we want them to do, it should be in their service level agreements. So, you know, I don't know what time and effort it's gone in them having to fill out all the forms that are required to substantiate, you know, two thousand dollars when we have literally, you know, four hundred thousand plus dollar service level agreement with GAPDL to do what we want them to do, which I know that they will do exceptionally well. So, anyway, that's just a comment, not a question, maybe for the future.
Thanks councillor Churchill.
Okay, you're moving that councillor Goodluck? No?
No, I'm just, I, we run BAME Event, which I know is a different circumstance, it's an established brand, so to speak, albeit we haven't run one this year due to obvious circumstances, but I've never once spent two thousand dollars on marketing material. I'm not sure of any other event in that, of that type that does that, I'm just not sure that this is a, and I'll take councillor Churchill's points as well, I'm a little bit torn on this one.
Councillor Churchill, sorry councillor Goodluck, I did omit to say they are also using it for merchandising signage, so printing of core flutes, purchasing of A-frames, directional signage, et cetera, so that is included in that two thousand dollar cost. Another reason why GAPDL are wanting to host these markets are the absence of the Feast on East markets that we usually have.
And the, what evidence have we got, other than, other than the fact that other markets aren't obviously running at this time, that this is going to be a success rather than, you know, what's going to be different to the last several number of attempts to run a similar, very similar event in the same spot? Have you got any confidence around that?
Sorry Kylie, before you answer, the other markets are running, so that BAME might not be running and Feast on East might not be running, but other markets are, just wanted to clarify.
And there's a new one coming on too, the...
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean that no markets are running, I just meant there's a few that are, yeah.
We are working with the applicant around the locality of the market, the shop front in Gendune Street itself has posed a lot of challenges just around traffic control. We are looking at using an alternate open air space for the, for the actual market.
And obviously it'd have to comply with COVID operating procedures, how is it that that event will, will monitor and restrict the number of people that are likely to want to enter it?
GAPDL will be responsible for implementing their COVID safe plan, but that's always a subject in our funding agreements regardless.
Very similar way to the way that Rotary Markets manage the markets of the Tondoon Gardens every, Tondoon Botanical Gardens every month.
I think the potential, the Tondoon Botanical Gardens is a unique venue and it's able to comply with the current COVID procedures relatively easily compared to some other events, and I know what I'm talking about in that space. I think Gendune Street might be a little bit more challenging, I'm not saying it's impossible, so given that, I know that we can, we can sort of say, oh, it's GAPDL's responsibility, are we going to make sure that, given it's on our land essentially and our venue, so to speak, that we'll be making sure that that compliance is relevant for the benefit of our community, obviously?
Any event that's on any of our venues, councillor Goodluck, has to be COVID safe, so we do ensure that. If it is on somebody else's property or land, then it will be the applicant's responsibility for a COVID safe plan, but it is written into our sponsorship agreement.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, in the essence of time, I'm prepared to move the officer's recommendation, and before you call for a second, I'd just like to make a brief comment in relation to the two thousand dollars. Yes, I support the intent of the project, I'll go back to the service level agreement that we have in place with GAPDL, but at the same time, is it going to be more than two thousand? Because I've heard from the officers here, effectively in support of the motion, that council's working with GAPDL, I just haven't seen the overall plan, there's traffic control and there's, there's a whole range of other things, what are all those additional costs that are going to be borne upon our ratepayers from a council perspective? Is it just two thousand dollars? But I'm supportive of the intent of the recommendation.
Kylie, before you answer, can I have a second over that, please? Thank you councillor Grady, over to you Kylie.
Councillor Churchill, there may be some officer's time that would be allocated to this particular application, but in the benefit, in the benefit of a good relationship with GAPDL, I think that's, that's a resource well spent.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments councillors? It's moved by councillor Churchill, seconded by councillor Grady, all in favour? Motion is carried. I have an interest in the next item, so I'll leave the room, hand over to the deputy and I'll grab councillor Trevor and Branthwaite while I'm out there.
Just wait for councillor Trevor and councillor Branthwaite to return. All right, we'll move on to item number S slash one point nine, insurance services, and I'll hand over to the general manager for finance, governance and risk.
Thank you deputy mayor. This item is with respect to the supply of insurance services for a suite of essentially our property insurances for, that are currently through Marsh Proprietary Limited. So this is considering a option to go with LGM Assets, so LGM Assets is a company that's owned by LJQ and provides coverage based on a mutual that is actually owned by all local governments that are members of that mutual. We currently utilise LGM services for both our public liability and also our work cover insurance currently. So the LG assets in terms of insurance in the property space is a relatively new offering, this is around about three or four years they've been operating, but we've been with Marsh under a contract since that time, so it's probably our first chance to consider it in that space. We believe, having reviewed the offering that is available through LGM, they provide a number of additional services over and above what is currently available to us through, through Marsh, through both claim support, but also through valuing in our risk network, through risk networks and also assistance in consulting services in that space, essentially through your membership costs, so through your mutual cost. So, and as well, there is a waiving of, and there's no applicable brokerage fee that you would pay if you were to outsource this, which we currently do through Marsh, so that's in the order of thirty thousand currently that we, it's a cost. So if we were to move with LGM Assets, it is a, essentially requires a resolution to that effect, recognising, recognising that essentially it is a, essentially a sole source supplier and needs that resolution accordingly under section two thirty four of the regulation. So happy to take questions?
Thanks, Mark. Any questions?
Happy to move this deputy mayor.
Moved by councillor Hanson and seconded by councillor Grady, and can I just say that it's a great testament to the local government of association of Queensland and the services that we're able to provide back to councils, and also congratulate the team on a thirty thousand dollar a year savings, only a little bit, but every dollar counts, so good to see that we've identified an opportunity for further efficiency. So moved councillor Hanson, seconded by councillor Grady, all those in favour? That's carried. We will grab the mayor and get the mayor back things.
Next item on the agenda is S one point ten, which is our operational plan first quarter report. Over to you Kylie. Oh, sorry.
Which leads me to a quick question, and perhaps if I could address it to Tanya, with your permission, mayor, and that is in relation to removing yourself from the chamber as we know it in here and there being a large screen just outside, is it appropriate that councillors stay in the confines of this building, or should we remove ourselves so that we're, even though we're not part of the debate, we're listening to the conversation as and when it happens? That, I did read the legislation and it, it didn't actually say, from what I could recall, as to whether you had to actually remove yourself from the, 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 the public part of the, the building, or whether you, or whether you could stay here, but my concern really was that when I was outside in relation to my conflict just prior to the mayor leaving, I was there, I was talking to, well, to be honest with you, I was studying the form of the Melbourne Cup, but, but until Daryl Branthwaite came out and interrupted me, but, but, but if I wanted to, I could hear exactly... me, but if I wanted to, I could hear exactly what was going on in this chamber, even though I've absented myself from it, and I just felt a little bit uncomfortable with the fact that I could listen to the debate if I chose to, whilst at the same time removing myself from the arena. So I'm just anxious to know, Tania, should we go that little extra mile, or should, is it okay, from a legal perspective, to stay and listen to the conversation, even though we've ousted ourselves from the arena, that's all? It's just a question that, when the mayor came in and he was sort of privy to the same situation, should we be getting out further away from the general issue?
The regulations talk about removing yourself from the place where the meeting's held, and any public area set aside for the meeting. Given that we don't have any public at the meeting, I don't believe it's an issue. Our meetings are live-streamed, so even if you are out on the street potentially, you could still be hearing the discussion as it takes place. That's the best I can do at this point in time.
Councillor, if I may, Mr Chair, I think the intent is to remove you from the place the decision's being made, so you are not influencing the decision being made, so I don't believe there's any issue with you watching what's happening outside, you're not eyeballing anyone or encouraging someone to move in a particular way, so I don't believe that that's a concern.
Okay, back to you, Carly.
Thank you, councillors. I'd like to introduce you to our corporate planning business partner, Lesley Semien Newton. Lesley's been instrumental in driving the new format of our quarterly reporting that's presented to you today, and she's also acting in the role of manager of strategic business planning for the next two weeks, while Sarah Hunter is on some well-earned leave. The new report format includes a number of highlights across our nine strategic goals from the July to September quarter this year, as well as an update on our specific operational plan activity, and the report indicates that we are 100% on track with our current activity. This year's new reporting structure ensures that there's more visibility of our plan with, and our priority activity, with almost half of our operational plan being delivered by the business through the transformation programme, and getting raised, with any issues or concerns getting raised on a weekly basis, and the other half of the programme getting reported on monthly internally. This is a lot more visibility internally to the business and to senior executive, the senior team, than we have had in the past, and as a result of that, we've been able to raise any challenges or roadblocks relatively quickly and early, and resolve them. And as a result of this approach, we're very confident in the data that we're presenting today around being 100% on track. The quarterly report also has a quarterly update on our COVID recovery plan for the region this year, so every quarter you will see that. It indicates the number of items that we have completed in the economic space, the community space, and the tourism space, in all of those sub-plans over the last quarter, and as a whole, that recovery plan is also on track. I'll assume the report is read and hand over to Lesley for any questions.
Carly, councillor Hanson.
The burning question I have is, with your progress reports, how can we have percentage progress of 60% with a green light and one with 15% with a green light, especially when it's a very important one, improved maintenance planning and scheduling? So how can we have a 60% with a green light and a 15% completion with a green light?
Thank you for that question. Each of the projects or activities within the plan span over a year, and they each have their own specific project plan. So they have, in case of the transformation project, they have toolbox events that happen monthly, and they track per month the activities within that project plan. So some projects are tracking to finish earlier in the year or later in the year, but if they are following their plan, they are green. So 15% could be green in that framework.
I was going to ask the same question about another item, because there's a couple of 15% with green lights. All right, that makes...
There's one with zero percentage.
Better green light.
Mayor, there's one with a zero percentage, and it's still got a green light.
Correct. That particular project with zero isn't slated to start the bulk of their work until later in the year.
Excellent. Any other questions, councillors? Fairly easy to read. I think you might find even members of the community might read that one. It can be a clumsy report to read over the years sometimes, but this is really nice and easy to read. Councillor, good luck.
I just wanted to note, I think there was 11 out of 13 planned burns that council's undertaken this financial year in preparation for the bushfire season, and my understanding is that's a record, is that we've never done that many burns, from my understanding anyway. That may or may not be correct, but it's just good to see that we're preparing for that event. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a record or not, but it certainly is pretty well-done for the team to get that many. I think it's more than 11, but anyway, it might say 11 in there, but it's a significant percentage of what needed to be done has been done. There's only, yes, it must be 11 out of 13, because there's two left that they couldn't get to. Councillor Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor Matt. It would be extremely remiss of me if I didn't at least raise the RV strategy and the RV market, albeit, and it's good, we have progressed, we've got the proposal, and we've got the development now, and the signage audit, and the list goes on, but I'll still emphasise here at this stage, and best wishes, Lesley, with this RV one in your role as such, but our region, and I'm not being derogatory, I'm being constructively critical, is that this region is still not RV-friendly, and rather than going over the past and trying to forge for the future, I still see a big red dot sitting in there, we're talking colour-coded. So the implementation is the doing now, is to get on and do, and interestingly, during the whole COVID challenges that we've had, we've seen a huge influx, a huge influx of the RVs into our region, and then taking up all that enjoyment of what's on offer in our region, keeping them here. And again, I would have hoped there might be a little green one, or a pretty pink one here that could say that we're actually going to put some type of affluent dump site into the city of Gladstone, but at this particular stage, nothing here is jumping out at me to say that we've progressed to the stage of being totally RV-friendly. And I've always been of the belief that if we're not friendly, then we're considered to be unfriendly, but during COVID, we've been very friendly. So would value or appreciate any response on that point.
Yeah, I think the importance of being RV-friendly is certainly not lost on offices, and it is included in the strategy. So these four items here in the Tourism Economic Recovery are just four specific items that have been pulled out to be reported against for the COVID recovery plan. There is still the visitor economy strategy and RV strategy that are being worked through separately to that. They're not reported on in the operational plan, though, they're not one of the 15 items that we agreed to report on. I know the team are working through those actions, and it is an active strategy that is being implemented alongside our manager of Events and Entertainment and GAPDL. If you want, we could bring back an update to a future information session with the progress on those two strategies.
Perhaps that could be appropriate, I think, through you, Madam CEO, or alternatively, if you can just, I believe we have a dump site somewhere in one of our depots? If we just go and get it, and can we put it in the ground and connect it to the system?
I don't think it's there anymore. Someone told me that that's moved.
Oh, it might have, okay.
We did a search for the depots and couldn't find it, so unfortunately... So Trevor, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. The plant and equipment to facilitate a dump site in Gladstone was in the Lion Street Depot in 2004, when I was first elected to council, councillor Churchill. Where it's gone from there, I'm not entirely sure, but it's a sad indictment on all of us, that it's been 16 years now since that material was originally purchased for the sole purpose of having a dump site in Gladstone. And perhaps we could, given the fact that it has been 16 years, we could perhaps expedite that issue imminently. My greatest concern in relation to the RVs is the fact that, notwithstanding that we're faced or staring down the barrel of the COVID crisis, we haven't expedited the RV-friendly protocols, because international travel is some years away, and we have over $30 billion worth of investment on the domestic market that needs to be spent somewhere now, that can't be spent on international travel and international holidays. If we don't seize the day now, and at least try and engage that part of the tourism sector by way of invitation into our community, on the basis of being RV-friendly, I think we'll miss an opportunity. I know you've been very active in pursuing this, councillor Churchill, and I commend you for that. I think it's probably something we've perhaps dropped our guard over the years on, but there is no more perfect example now with COVID to reinvent the wheel and get on with it as a priority, because, as I say, there's $30 billion worth of money to be spent over the next few years in domestic travel, and a lot of that, I think, will come up the Bruce Highway. You only have to see what happened in Agnes Water 1770 over the past three months, and Desli will attest to this, to see the sheer enormity and magnitude of economic activity that was happening in that part of our region through RVs. It was, the business owners had Christmas Day every day for two months. It has abated somewhat, but at some stage, when the borders are reopened, including to the greater part of Sydney and New South Wales and Victoria, they will come, and they will come in big numbers because they can't fly overseas. And if we miss that opportunity, I think it'll be a very sad day for our community, particularly from an economic development point of view, when it comes to our business operators and owners, including those in our tourism part of our regions, including the Boyne Valley and the southern part of the Great Barrier Reef. So I do encourage and support your continual lobbying, councillor Churchill, for a quick outcome on this, and I think there's no better time now to facilitate some quick action as a priority to deliver an RV-friendly community that will make our region competitive on the Australian stage. There's no international stage for a couple of years now, but certainly from an Australian point of view, I don't think we should lose the opportunity to take advantage of a huge economic outcome that could befall our community if we take active and proactive steps to achieve that outcome. So it's a good point, councillor Churchill, and I support you wholeheartedly, and I wonder if we could do that imminently and urgently, Mayor, with a view to delivering some great economic outcomes for our region.
Thanks, councillor Trevor. Seize the day.
With respect, I agree wholeheartedly with the two councillors, but I've been sitting here for 15 years, and we keep saying the same thing, and it's nothing to do with the current offices, I'm not criticising current offices in this regard, but we have to do more than just ask for this to happen, because it just isn't happening. We've asked, and asked, and asked. So we have to be a little bit more forceful than asked.
Put a date on when we'd like it by, but councillor Grady had a question?
Yep.
Not really a question, but over the last six weeks, I've been down Kilipe River state of the night, I've been out at Futter Creek state of the night, and just the opportunity to talk to some caravanners, like I counted 140 caravans out of Kilipe River, and I probably spoke to about 50 of them, and I said, you know, do you go to Gladstone? Only probably 1% go to Gladstone, because, and I said, what's the reason why? We can get our groceries in Kilipe, which is great, but there's no dump point in Gladstone. So there are, I know there is two CSR's in the system for dump, you know, about dump points, so I think there's something we really need to do. And also CMCA, a few years ago, offered to go 50% for a dump point, is that correct, councillor Churchill? And so talking to them, they really wanted to be involved, and I don't know whether we've lost the opportunity to be involved with CMCA as well, so I think we should revisit that as well.
Carly, is it unreasonable for us to request this dump point, a public dump point, be installed in the city of Gladstone by the end of the year? Considering the timing, how long it's been going on for? I know that's unreasonable, generally give you two months, but we need to put a date on it, we need it in, and can you help us out here?
Before the managing answers, Mayor Matt, is that with all due respect, my notice of motion was April 2016, effectively four years ago, where we spoke about aspects of the RV-friendly, the dump site was recognised, then we're here again today from councillor Trevor, you know, and councillor Ansu, you know, we had a dump site in 2004. I see it as a simple exercise in the business world to be able to just simply go and do it. If there are some limiting factors as to why we can't put a dump site in, then I believe the elected members should be aware of what those limitations may be, so that we can get on and be able to deliver something that was locked in, and I believe was going to be part of an action within our asset management programme, because we're claiming 100% delivery, and we're still waiting. So maybe we sold it to Bundaberg or Rockhampton, and they got on and installed it.
Sorry, well, we're getting there, and because we've gone around in circles a little bit again, sorry, Carly, you're going to have to answer that tomorrow, because it's not relevant to what's on the agenda today, unfortunately. I believe it is, councillor Churchill, before you jump down my throat, I agree with you, but I've been advised by our officers that it's not, and because it's a special meeting, we're going to discuss what's on the agenda, but I guarantee you, this is coming up tomorrow, so be ready. It needs to be installed, and it needs to be installed before the borders are opened on the 1st of December, because they're all reviewed at the end of the month, and it's highly likely, if there's no community transmission in New South Wales, that the Greater Sydney will be, borders would be open to Queensland on the 1st of December, or announcement on the last day of December for a few days later, and we would have New South Wales possibly, who knows what's going on in Victoria, Victorian visitors in central Queensland around Christmas. We really should have this dump point in by then.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Mayor Matt, I'm not challenging you on that point, but there is one light item that sits here, and it says, how about we commence some community consultation on an RV strategy implementation through a conversations platform? And that's got a red dot in there, and we're talking about the colours, it's a red dot, we're going to do that 2020, 2021.
And that's why I thought it was relevant today, but apparently it's not, but that's okay, it will be tomorrow, and officers have forewarning, 24 hours forewarning, but I think we want it in before the end of the year. Okay, any further questions on the actual report in front of us? No, can I have a mover, please? Moved councillor Hanson, seconded councillor Churchill, officer's recommendation be accepted, all in favour? That's carried. Being a special meeting, there is no deputations, no council reports, no urgent business, no notices of motion, and no confidential items. I declare the meeting closed at 11:55, but reminding residents that there will be a live-stream council meeting again tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, so see you then. Thank you.